And good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School Board Meeting for May 23rd. We are glad to have those of you that are with us tonight and we are glad to have those that are at home watching on television perhaps. We encourage you to come back and visit us often. At this time, we have two young people from our school system. Makamai Batista, a sixth grader from Bradley Academy, and Tara Walker, a second grader from Kason Lane Academy, to come forward and lead us in our pledge, followed then by our moment of silence. And now, our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, our moment of silence. Thank you. All right, board members, you have a copy of the agenda in front of you and have been sent to you earlier. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Renee, to have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any question, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is communications. And at this point in time, we'd like to recognize Ms. Susan Gaither, who would like to address the board.
Good evening. Dr. Gilbert, Mr. Campbell, and members of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. At your request, I come before you representing a large portion of the Discovery School community, some of which are present this evening. On May 1st, a letter was sent home with our children informing the community of a bell change. Seeing no explanation for the change, parents emailed the school administration trying to understand. The principals cited administrative reasons, and despite our attempts, there was no discussion and no compromise. In response, I started a petition as a way to survey the parents to see if anyone else shared my confusion. The response was overwhelming with 167 signatures and multiple comments included in your packets. While I do not have access to records on all families, I was able to verify the majority of individuals who signed. These are Discovery families. Some of the comments in the petition were first because of it was a magnet school and because there was no sibling preference, many siblings are often enrolled in other schools, both city and county. This makes transportation needs much more difficult. Families made decisions on which school siblings were able to attend for the 2017-2018 school year based on the current bell time. Second, no bus transportation deems the need for a greater timeframe for parents to adjust to the time change. Third, because families are geographically dispersed, a greater distance from school means a much earlier wake-up time than a normal zone school. We are grateful for the Discovery School, but with choice comes a high level of buy-in. Discovery School has a very invested group of parents. We are invited to share in the work of our school, and we as parents have given our time, energy, and money as a response. The parents feel they have been invited to become stakeholders in our school. Many of us were surprised to learn of this unilateral decision. Around lunchtime today, the parents received a call and an email from the school's administration informing us the bell time would be changed to now 7:45 for the next school year. While we appreciate the acknowledgement of our concerns, we are asking for the school board to develop a policy for a process the administration will follow that allows transparency, communication, and time in making a change as is a bell time for the school, not dependent on school transportation. Due to this disruptive nature of this change and lack of proper notification and rationale, we also request a one-year delay for changing the Discovery School bell time. We appreciate your time and service to our community and the opportunity to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a note from Ms. Maddox, the principal, and it states, "Dear parents, a few weeks ago, you received a letter from me stating that the bell times of Discovery School would change next year to a 7:30 arrival time and a 2:30 dismissal time. Subsequently, I have heard from parents who have been strongly in favor and those who have been strongly opposed to the bell time changes. In order to keep the vision of Discovery moving forward and yet be responsive to some parents' concern, Discovery School will be adjusting its 2017-18 bell times to a 7:45 arrival and a 2:45 dismissal time. This will still allow the plans to enhance the new activities and learnings of parents and children to move forward next year without delay. Thank you for your cooperation." Those of you that are here, if you would like to speak with board members after the meeting, I'm sure they'll be more than happy to speak to you about that concern or any others as well. And at this point in time, we'll move on to the next communication.
At this time, I'd like for Gary Anderson to come and talk about recycling.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, audience, here and at home. This is a great experience for me every year to get the chance to award our winner of our recycling contest at our schools. Our school district is engaged in recycling activities year-round, and with the help of Matt Nolan and Mimi Keesling with Rutherford County Solid Waste Management, they help us go through, actually look at our recycling, how much we actually do at each school, and they put together this information, present it to me, and then I go through it, and we determine which school is our actual winner of who did the best. In front of you here, and I will take this off now, is the coveted recycling trophy.[488.12][488.12](Laughter). It's a dumpster painted green to represent the recycling. Very nice. And this trophy will go to the school that has the best recycling percentage of any school in the district. We started this program three years ago, so we've had two previous winners, and this year, we have another winner. What we ask the schools to do is to assign a student at every school and every classroom to be over-recycling for that classroom, and we ask them to work together with the custodial staff and get the recycled goods to the appropriate recycling container, hence the green box. This trophy has been given to two other schools, as I mentioned earlier. The first school that won it was Northfield, and the next school, well, last year's winner, was Mitchell Nielsen. Now, remember back when schools focused on the three Rs, reading, writing, arithmetic? Well, there's a new three Rs in recycling, and they are reduce, reuse, and recycle. So we are just recycling the three R slogan for our program. So, I would like to announce the winner of this year, and I have in my hand the envelope that was prepared by the finance office in strictest guidelines. Oh, before I read, I need to tell you something else. We had, since we track every school, I needed to announce that we had two other schools that did an absolutely excellent job this year. In third place was Black Fox. Black Fox recycled 36.5% of their trash by volume. So that, we feel is really good, and that is constantly edging up on the bar. The next was our second-place winner, and this school has been second place. They are fighting to get that coveted trophy in their building, and that would goes to Scales Elementary School with 41%. Before I announce the winner, I've got to show you what we have. For every one of the participants who are part of the recycling team, we have a nice miniature recycling container to provide every one of the people who participated. We also have pencils recycled with money from the government. Money, now you can't spend this because it's all ground up, nice and neat, but everyone who was a big participant in our program will receive a pencil as well. Are you ready for the announcement of the winner?
Yay![651.55][651.55](Laughter).
Mr. Anderson?
I wonder why they're all here.
All right. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir.
Not long ago, we had a gentleman who made a major presentation and goofed it. Let's don't announce the wrong one. I know you won't.
The pressure is now on. And if something goes wrong, I have all these youngins over here who will come get me, I'm sure. All right, and the winner is of the 2016-2017 Recycling Award with 47% by-volume recycling, Bradley Academy. Bradley Bobcat is with us. Thank you. Bradley Bobcat came to help celebrate with the students. So if we could please have our principal come up and tell us how we did it. Where is she hiding at? Oh, here she comes. And if you can tell us, I'd like to first of all, present to you your official trophy to be on display at your school for the whole year. It says, "For the 2016-17 winner Bradley Academy, the Official Dumpster Award."
Okay, so we have a large group with us, and that's partly because we took on what Mr. Anderson asked us to do at Bradley, and every child is responsible for recycling at Bradley. There's not a recycle team, so to speak. We all take part in that. Every child is responsible. And so with us, we have kids from each classroom that represent what happens in their room. They all take an active part in the classroom, in the hallways, whenever there's projects going on. I've heard from some of our littlest ones that they come and grab the recycle bin and put it in the middle of the room so that everyone is reminded to put their recycling stuff in the bin. So we all play an active role, so this is all of their work. So this goes for them, and it'll be on display in our brand-new trophy case in the front office. So kudos to these friends right here.
Ms. Ortiz, could they introduce themselves, please?
Absolutely. You can step right up here and tell them who you are.
I'm De'Andre Brown.
I'm Wendy Cia Brown.
I'm Mari Smith.
I'm Aleah Smith.
I'm Ben Richardson.
I'm Elliot Richardson.
I'm Alana Thomas.
I'm Amira Alley.
I'm Kendra Collier.
I'm Avontae Collier.
I'm Summer Regly.
I'm Kylie Spence.
I'm De'Andre Bell.
I'm Gabby Frenchhawk.
I'm Woody Bird.
Save the best for last.
Alka Ma Batista.
All right, and check out our website. Did you come up, Avontae? My friend Ben and Elliot Richardson have made a recycling video, and we're going to get that from mom to put on our website. So check out our website later on this week, and you'll see that. They're really big into it, and Elliot is very proud of his video, so it'll be up on our website later this week. Thank you, guys.
Don't forget your little dumpsters. And your pencils here. And as Kermit the Frog would say, "It's really hard to be green." But obviously, Bradley has taken care of that. Thank you, Bradley. Thank you, board.
Every year, I think I'm not going to have him do that because that's his... Every year, it gets bigger and bigger. Back to communications. Mitchell Nielsen Schools recently received a USDA Equipment Assistance Grant in the amount of $20,000 to purchase a convection steamer. And Mitchell Nielsen also would like to thank Panda Express for donating food for their Leadership Day. They donated enough food to feed all of their visitors and the entire staff. John Pittard Elementary would like to thank Franklin Synergy Bank for their donation of $500. They would also like to thank Bel Air Baptist Church for providing lunch for the entire staff and also for their senior members that volunteered to help at the end-of-the-year dojo meeting. And a big thanks also for providing lunch to the entire staff to haul automotive from John Pittard. They also provided Sonic Drinks for the entire staff. And from John Pittard again, thanking Roger Patterson from Patco for providing the grill and gas to cook hot dogs for their end-of-the-year dojo party. And then finally, Kason Lane Academy's Junior Beta Club has earned the 2017 Lifesaver Award from the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society Tennessee Chapter. Kason Lane was one of the top 10 schools in the state of Tennessee to raise money, the most money, to fight against blood cancer, funding breakthrough therapy. So congratulations to Kason Lane, and those are your communications.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Consent items? Have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. King. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Any discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Action items you have before you, the upcoming year's board meeting dates. Of course, these may need to change depending on what happens and the need for them, but right now, you have before you the board meeting dates that are at your regularly-scheduled time.
It's after all these minutes on the computer. Which, by the way, the minutes have been beautifully done.
Well, she would be glad to hear that.
Is this an action item for a move to approve?
Sir?
Does this require a board approval for the meeting dates?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Does it?
Yeah.
All right. Because it's going to flex, I'm sure.
All right. Oh, there they are. All right, is any question or discussion on board meeting dates? Now, do we have a motion to approve the dates?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Personnel report?
Yes, personnel report is there before you. If you have questions about that, or Mr. Ringstaff, where are you? Do you have anything that you need to? Okay. All right. So if you have questions, see Mr. Ringstaff.
Okay.
We do have a report tonight, and Kim Frank is going to give it. You will remember that Murfreesboro City was one of two school districts that received an ACES grant, which has to do with adverse childhood experiences. We have not had an opportunity to give you an update upon on that, so we thought tonight would be a good night to do that. So, Kim, if you'll come forward.
Good evening. I'm going to pull this slide show up. You may recall that in the fall of last year, we were awarded a grant from the Department of Children's Services and the Governor's Office. It was a competitive grant, and we were awarded that grant for the 2016-2017 school year. We've used those funds to educate our children about mental health. We've been able, through, with no capital outlay on the part of Murfreesboro City Schools, to provide small group and individual counseling for children in all 12 schools. So, we have resubmitted that grant and found out in April last month that we have been awarded the funds for this next year. So we'll be able to continue those services. So, to help you understand what this means, I'm going to share, just for a few minutes, a little bit about adverse childhood experiences and the Building Strong Brains Initiative that's part of, that comes from the state of Tennessee. Okay? The idea behind the Building Strong Brains Initiative is that when we have healthy child development, particularly when we address concerns for young children, that it makes an impact on educational achievement for our state. It makes an impact for our economic productivity. It makes an impact on how children grow and become responsible citizens. It impacts their lifelong health. And those pillars combine to help our children that we're educating today in addressing their mental health concerns today to become more successful parents in the next generation. And we know when that happens, we have stronger communities and we have a healthier economy. Now, that's the state's reason for beginning the initiative. We're interested in the ACES initiative because we know that we have children who need help, and they need help now so that they can have better life outcomes. So that was our purpose, but the state described their initiative in this way. So there are four core principles for the Building Strong Brains Initiative. One of them is having good brain architecture. The second is an idea of serve and return. And Ms. Smith, I know you're familiar with that idea of serve and return, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. Yeah, from tennis. The third concept is toxic stress, and the fourth concept is what do we need to do to build resilience? So just as if we were building a building, we would want to start with a really good foundation. And brain development is just like building a house in that way. If we spend time with our young people early on for their emotional health, their academic success, their emotional health, if we teach them basic skills like that and help them grow and develop that way, we know that they have a greater chance of being successful adults. And the idea of our Building Strong Brains Initiative is just like building a house. We want to do things for children while they're with us in the elementary school that give them skills and experiences that will help them through their adolescence and then through their life. Part of building a good support system for our children is focusing on something called serve and return. Just like serve and return in tennis, or volleyball, or ping pong, children develop skills based on the concept of serve and return. Serve and return means that when children coo at their parents, when they laugh at their parents, when they smile at a caregiver who may or may not be their parent, when they gesture, and there is some, that's their serve, and there is some kind of consistent and predictable response, when that happens in a predictable way, those children developed neural connections in their brain that are the foundation for successful communication and for successful understanding of social-emotional needs. It helps them build those kinds of connections that help them be grounded in a social network. The more children experience that serve and return, the more they coo, and someone responds, the more someone responds when they cry, the stronger those connections become. And as they experience stress or other things later, they are more resilient as they grow if they have experienced that strong serve and return. So that's one of the concepts that's part of our Building Strong Brains Initiative. What we know is that children who have a strong, consistent, predictable adult relationship are stronger emotionally. One of the things that causes children to really struggle in schools is if they don't have that consistent, positive adult relationship. And so we've worked really, really hard this year to train all of our school leaders and our school teachers, not only in how to teach reading and writing and arithmetic, but also how to really take a moment to connect with each child in the room, because that might be the only positive connection that they have during a day. When children don't experience that, they can experience something called toxic stress. Now, there are three different kinds of stress that are recognized in this initiative. One is called positive stress, and positive stress is what we all experience. Positive stress helps us grow and develop and learn to wait and to experience hardships, but to triumph over those. Those are those short-lived things, starting a new school year as an example, just, you know, finding a parking spot sometimes, or a seat in a school board meeting can be that moment of stress. And then there's tolerable stress. We've all experienced that. A death in the family is a tolerable stress if you have a support network that will help you through that, if you know that there's somebody there that will stand with you. And then there's toxic stress. Toxic stress is that kind of stress that it elevates your heart rate, and it seems like it never ends. We have a lot of children who experience toxic stress. They don't have necessarily someone who is there outside of school to be that positive, sustained adult in their life. And so they experience a lot of stress, which definitely impacts their emotional well-being, their physical well-being, and of course, their academic success in school. So that's why combating this has a positive impact on all of our children. In the mid-1990s, Kaiser Permanente, a huge insurance group, along with the Centers for Disease Control, looked at some significant health outcomes for individuals, and they tried to ascertain what is it that all of these individuals have in common. And after studying 17,000 different individuals, they identified these 10 adverse childhood experiences. They found that many of the people who had those adverse physical outcomes, physical health outcomes, or mental health outcomes, had experienced one of these 10. Some kind of abuse, some kind of neglect, or some kind of household dysfunction that really disrupted their childhood development. What they determined was that for each one of these things that a child experiences, the child gets a score of 1. So if you've been physically abused, on this particular rating scale, you'd get a score of 1. For each of the other items, you would also get a score of 1. And what they found was that the greater a child's score on this adverse childhood experience scale, the more likely that individual was to develop risky health behaviors, like drug addiction, alcoholism, the more likely they were to experience some kind of physical health challenge. And it became, and is now, a major public health initiative. We know that the higher the ACES score, the more likely the child is, or the adult is, at a later age to experience one of these poor health outcomes. And what you see on this chart is the higher the number, the more likely that a person would experience one of those adverse events. In Tennessee, it looks like this. In 2012, and again in 2014, they studied the number of adverse childhood experiences that people reported. And remember, this is based on report. So the hypothesis is that actually more people experience these than would report. But in 2014, 61% of the population of Tennessee that responded had at least one adverse childhood experience. That would be one of those 10 experiences prior to age 18. And 24%, or 1 in 4, had an adverse childhood experience score of 3 or more. So you can see what the need for us to address what our students... So, you can see what, the need for us to address what our students are experiencing. Somewhere along here, we missed one. So, let me just show you this, this video that talks about, puts all this together, the brain architecture, toxic stress, and adverse childhood experiences.
Science tells us that the experiences we have in the first years of our lives actually affect the physical architecture of the developing brain. This means that brains aren't just born, they're also built over time based on our experiences. Just as a house needs a sturdy foundation to support the walls and roof, a brain needs a good base to support all future development. Positive interactions between young children and their caregivers literally build the architecture of the developing brain. Building a sturdy foundation in the earliest years provides a good base for a lifetime of good mental function and better overall health. So, just how is a solid brain foundation built and maintained in a developing child? One way is through what brain experts call serve and return interactions. Imagine a tennis match between a caregiver and a child, but instead of hitting a ball back and forth across a net, various forms of communication pass between the two, from eye contact to touch, from singing to simple games like peekaboo. These interactions repeated throughout a young person's developing years are the bricks that build a healthy foundation for all future development. But another kind of childhood experience shapes brain development too, and that's stress. Good kinds of stress, like meeting new people or studying for a test, are healthy for development because they prepare kids to cope with future challenges. Another kind of stress, called toxic stress, is bad for brain development. If a child is exposed to serious ongoing hardships like abuse and neglect, and he has no other caregiver in his life to provide support, the basic structures of his developing brain may be damaged. Without a sturdy foundation to properly support future development, he is at risk for a lifetime of health problems, development issues, even addiction. It's possible to fix some of the damage of toxic stress later on, but it's easier, more effective, and less expensive to build solid brain architecture in the first place. One of the things that sturdy brain architecture supports is the development of basic emotional and social skills. An important group of skills which scientists call executive function and self-regulation can be thought of like air traffic control in the child's mental airspace. Think of a young child's brain as the control tower at a busy airport. All those planes landing and taking off, and all of the support systems on the ground simultaneously demand the controller's attention to avoid a crash. It's the same with a young child learning to pay attention, plan ahead and remember, and follow lots of rules. Like all of us, kids have to react to things happening in the world around them while also dealing with worries, temptations, and obligations on their minds. As these demands for attention pile up, air traffic control helps a child regulate the flow of information, prioritize tasks, and above all, find ways to manage stress and avoid mental collisions along the way. Having this ability is a necessity for positive and level mental health. Developing effective air traffic control, overcoming toxic stress, and building solid brain architecture are things kids can't do on their own. And since strong societies are made up of healthy contributing individuals, it's up to us as a community to make sure all young people have the kinds of nurturing experiences they need for positive development. To build better futures, we need to build better brains.
So, to wrap this up, understanding, your understanding of ACEs and your understanding of the vocabulary that we're using associated with ACEs will help you if people ask you questions. We get calls from people from school districts all over asking about our, the work that we've done this year. We get invited to share our work in other places often. With the funds that we've received through this grant, we have been able to provide intensive, small group intervention for 240 Murfreesboro City Schoolchildren this year. This is a 10-week program. Parents don't pay anything for it. We have people that are trained in mental health that are providing this, you know, with parental consent in our schools. We're currently looking at the data to see, has this made an impact on their office discipline referrals and on their SRSS, their Student Risk Screening Scale benchmark, so that we can tell whether or not, that this is having the impact what we, that we want. But we also hear weekly from teachers that children who have participated in that program are happier, that they are more engaged in learning. I got an email from a teacher today thanking us for doing this for a, a particular student in, in her class. So, the goal ultimately is to shift the conversation. Instead of asking children, when they misbehave, "What's wrong with you?", the goal is that by becoming more knowledgeable about the impact of what adverse childhood experiences do to children's brain development, that we will ask, "What has happened to you?", so that we can respond more appropriately to the needs of our children. So, that's a summary of our ACEs Grant. Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Questions? Ms. Smith?
This is very sad to me that we have to have this program. And I do understand about the serve and return. Thank you for that explanation, that point, that the, the fact that we have to talk about that someone needs to, if they don't get a response, they don't feel important. It's, it's about a child feeling valued, and what they say is important to other people. So, I don't understand how this works logistically. Who, who is coordinating? Is it going through the school counselors? And how you are, I assume that you're pinpointing children who you see have this, this score? And, but in this lesson, of course, we, what we are talking about is not letting them get the score.
Right.
So, can you explain a little bit on the logistics and all that, please?
We have no idea what the score is for each of our children. We haven't asked them to complete the adverse childhood experience rating scale. What we have is teacher knowledge or school counselor knowledge of some of the things that our children experience. And so, with that information, and with their, you know, how they manifest those kinds of challenges with their behavior in school, teachers and school counselors can nominate a student to participate in, in this program. At each of our schools, on a monthly basis, we have behavior support team meetings where we look at children who have office discipline referrals, or who flag at risk on one of our, one of our benchmarks, our behavior benchmarks. And so, we would also think about those children, think about not, you know, what's wrong with you that you're doing this behavior, but maybe what's happened to you that would cause you to do this behavior? And what kind of supports might we be able to put in place that would address the, the core problem for that child? Does that make sense?
Yes, it makes sense.
So, it's a 10-week program. The way that it's set up and the way that the, it's a research-based program that we're using called Bounce Back. And it's based on a 10-week program. So, the children are released from class one day a week for this-
Completely, a full day?
No, no, no. It's like 40, 30, 40 minutes based on the age of the child. And, and this is the focus for that time, because we know that, that if they're not available to learn, because they're thinking about something traumatic that it, that they've experienced, or something that they've witnessed, or, you know, something that they've never had an opportunity to share, if they, if they can't take care of that, they're not going to really be available. Many of them are not going to be available to learn.
Right, right.
So, we've made the determination that this is a, a good investment of, of our time with them and their, and their time, so that we can help them be, be more available to learn. Does that make sense?
It does. It's too bad that it can't be more on the front end like they were saying. But the, are, are the pre-K children involved in this?
They haven't been this year, but that's something that we're talking about. There's a parent component. So, our counselors, we hire, you know, with these funds, we were able to hire three counselors, and they have reached out to every parent that's participated. They've offered parent trainings about the importance of how, you know, how to engage your child, the importance of engaging your child regularly. They've met in the evenings at Patterson Park. They've also met at the schools. They've also met in the homes of parents who are not able to, to come to school, and connected them to resources and helped them understand, like, why this is really important, not only for the child that we have in our schools now, but, but any other children that they might have later. So, in that way, we're working to prevent these things from happening. There's a prevention component, and then there's a, a component to mitigate the impact already, you know, of children who have already experienced these kinds of things. So, we're trying to attack it on, on multiple ways. And we're really working hard with our teachers to help them understand, there could be a reason why this happens. It's not an excuse, but it helps us, it can help us understand that this child might be acting out because they're experiencing something that really no child should have to experience. So, we're working on it as a prevention, and, but also to mitigate.
Well, thank you for this.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Rehneer?
Pardon me. I'm just curious to know, having lived this life, what happens if you detect or know there's an issue with the child, but the parent does not want to be involved? How do you deal with that situation?
Well, parents have the opportunity to consent. I mean, they, they have to consent for the child to participate. But for children who, for whom, you know, parents won't provide consent, we still have a lot of things that we do within our schools. You know, we have what, Ms. Rehneer, tier-one intervention now, just like tier-one for reading, where you, it's what you do for all children. Through our response for intervention for behavior, we're, you know, we work really hard on teaching rules and expectations. We recognize children who follow those. So, there are things that are in place that are less intensive, but, but are focused on that teaching part of, of, you know, how to grow and be socially and emotionally secure.
I enjoyed the video. It reminded me of several years ago with the UPS video where they're drawing the truck and the little man and all that. I thought that was really cute.
Mr. Ballard?
Thank you, Ms. Frank, and I, and thank you and your office, the people that have worked so hard for these grants. And, and so, that leads me into my question. The grant that fuels this, is that a state grant or a federal grant?
It comes out of the governor's office and the Department for Children Services. Last year, they allocated one and a half million dollars for grants across the state of Tennessee, and we, we got $200,000 of that. So, we got one of, we got one of the biggest grants that, that they offered. And this year, for the second, you know, to the second year, they've been so pleased with the work that we've done and, and how we've represented the need to address adverse childhood experiences, that they basically said, "If you'll sign here, we'll give you the second-year fund." So, you know, I'm proud of the work that our school district has done.
That's great. Now, then, but you, having said that, you're going to need to receive those funds perpetually then, if you want to continue to work this program and, and, and build it as well. Are there other avenues for, to do that?
We have an opportunity to apply up to five years for these funds, but in an effort to be strategic, we have used some of the funds that we've had to provide really good training for all of our school counselors in adverse childhood experiences and in trauma. And so, should we lose the money, we might not be able to provide as intensive of intervention in 10 weeks. You know, small group is pretty intense. But we would be able to support our children to some extent who have, have these same experiences. So, we've tried to think that through long-term.
So, this, this program then is in every school?
Yes, sir.
That we have? And you have one, at least one counselor in every school?
We were able to hire three full-time counselors who, we, who have training in mental health, and then we provided them specific training in this Bounce Back program, an evidence-based program for children who have experienced traumatic events. We, we, and we provided them ongoing training. And so, each one of those counselors is, there's one to four. So, one counselor serves four schools. So, they're able to be in the school a whole day every week.
This is in addition to the school counselors?
Yes, this is in addition.
Okay. Now, and this is available for all grades?
Yes, sir.
So, when you, and you will pull the student out to have their, I'm, I'm going to call session for a better word.
Yes, sir, okay.
One time a week?
Or 10 weeks.
Four, okay. Now, when that, is there any particular time of the day in that child's curriculum that they're pulled out?
We, our school, our ACEs counselors have worked very hard in each building to work with the school administrator and the school counselor and that grade-level teacher to identify the best time for that, for that grade level to come out.
Okay.
And then the other thing, I guess I want to tell you, is that at the end of that 10 weeks, there's a determination made, there's a decision tree, if you will. So, if the child has done well in that program and can continue to be maintained with just support from the school counselor, that would be one, you know, one avenue. If the trauma is recent, or that experience is recent, and they feel like they need to maybe go back through the program a second time, that's an option. If the child really, really needs more, more support than what we can provide, you know, with, with the Bounce Back, with our ACEs, we will work with our school counselor to connect them and their family to outside services. So, it's not like after 10 weeks, they're done. There's a, a part where we really work hard to connect them to ongoing resources, because we know that you can't take care of something in 10 weeks, but, but it's a, a good start.
So, the program is ongoing the entire school year, but it just rotates from a 10-week cycle, then another 10-week, and this time, this 10 weeks, you're going to have a student maybe from a grade level, and next 10 weeks, you'd have a different student. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. In each building, they can have two to three groups going at the same time.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other question, Mr. King?
Got a few simple questions, if you don't mind. So, when a child is identified and brought into the sessions, as Mr. Campbell put it, that's when the ACEs score is determined as early as possible?
We don't, we don't actually determine their ACEs score.
You don't determine their ACEs score?
No, no.
Okay, okay. Depending on the event that the child experiences, you had like neglect or abuse, is the, the session or the counseling, if you will, kind of geared toward a event that it's-
It's not specific to a particular kind of event. We have had one or two instances where there has been child sexual abuse.
Okay.
Where it was deemed that that probably small group was not the best place to address that particular concern, and our, our folks saw those children individually.
Okay.
And then, with the hopes that maybe in a year, they would be able to be part of a group, but it was, it was determined that wasn't the appropriate setting.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm just curious, after the child goes through this program, is it possible that we could monitor the child, say, the next school year or the next, to make sure that the work that's being done has a positive impact? Kind of goes to Mr. Ballard's point, because if we're showing a positive impact based on your intervention, for lack of a better word, all the more reason for more grant money.
Exactly. Yes, we are.
To expand this program.
We, three times a year, we do a benchmark called the Student Risk Screening Scale, which our teachers complete for each child. There's an externalizing, what, what my behavior looks like, and an internalizing, like, am I moody? Do I look depressed? We get two scores. And we are going to follow those scores for those children across time. In fact, right now, we've pulled them from, from spring of 2016 to the, to right now and comparing those. We're also going to look at their office discipline referrals. We keep that in our Skyward Student Program, so we can see, do we see a decrease in the number of times that child is sent to the office? We would hope to see an improvement in that. And then we're also, it's less statistically significant, but we're also keeping, you know, emails and, and things that we get from teachers that just describe positive changes in the child's affect or their classroom behavior.
Okay. Okay. Last question. Your, your data, they showed where the result was like one in four had a score of three. Was that for the state of Tennessee or was that a national?
That's the state of Tennessee.
I thought so, wanted to be sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You will hear more about the ACES, the adverse childhood experiences. I really appreciate Kim being here, because with her help, I think the foundation was laid for us to be able to get this grant. So now, what, what I would like to see is for the state to push for really good mental health services, especially for children and families. That is the one area that consistently you'll hear superintendents talking about. So I'm grateful that Kim had already partnered with many of our mental health providers here for our schools, and I think that really helped form the foundation for getting this grant. But I do encourage, if there's anyone out there that is connected to the state, the Department of Education, Mental Health Services, all those folks need to come together for a comprehensive approach to children and families. We're desperately needing that in schools across the state.
Next, Carolyn?
That's my sermon for the night, and I've been preaching it for three years, let me tell you. We wanted to update you on the Read to Be Ready grant. I had written you and let you know that we did receive two of those grants, and those are grants that you will hear about on, on the media, because they are grants that the state has promoted. So I'm going to ask Carissa Dodson and Jenny Ortiz to come up and talk a little bit about their grants, because they will be impacting the community this summer, and we do want to get that word out.
Good evening. We were very excited to have two grants awarded in Murfreesboro City Schools, and one is a district-wide grant, and one Bradley Elementary received on their own. So we wanted to tell you a little bit about both. The first grant is the Murfreesboro City Schools grant, and we will be serving 40 children district-wide. We had to pick children from Title I schools that had economic need as well as a reading need. And so the whole premise of the camp is that it's not a sit-and-tutor kind of camp, it's more of a summer camp, but with good reading instruction. So what that'll look like is field trips, Google expeditions, read alouds from the community. We're going to Discovery Center, Stones River National Battlefield, and Limeball Library. We want to make sure that all the children and their families have library cards. We have a strong family component. We're doing a game night, as well as a literacy night, and a kickoff. So we're wanting to involve parents as much as possible in this camp as well. We have eight tutors from our district, all teachers, and so there'll be one on five with the students. And these teachers came together last week and have really developed some exciting curriculum for the teachers. They developed it themselves. And our focus in our camp is going to be a social studies integration, and so we're really looking to bridge that second to third grade social studies. In second grade, they really focus on the United States, whereas in third grade, they move to all the continents. So if you don't have that good grasp of the United States, you're really gonna struggle when you get to the other continents. So we're really hoping to bridge that gap between second and third grade. So all of our campers will be rising third graders, I forgot to mention that. So I'm really excited about it. We have strong partnerships with Limeball Library, Read to Succeed. The bookmobiles come in three times to each of the sites. And also, Lanes, Trains, and Automobiles is offering incentives to families for family bowling nights. MTSU, their students in their summer reading classes are gonna come and learn more about how to teach reading. So I think it's just gonna be a really exciting time for our students. We're providing transportation to and from camp at no charge to the parent, as well as Mr. Ringstaff has offered ESP services to all the students free of charge during the time of the camp. So we really want to take down all those barriers while often children can't attend these activities. So ours begins June 19th and runs through July 27th. So it's pretty much the whole summer. We want to prevent that summer slide and really motivate kids to read.
Our grant is very similar to the one for the district. Our focus will be science and the arts. So we've got lots of community members coming in, working with us on art projects. We will be going to the Discovery Center, the Chattanooga Aquarium, the Nashville Zoo, and, which one did I miss? Adventure Science Center. We do have guest readers coming in. We're working with a couple of authors to come in and really work on writing. We want to focus on writing with our rising third graders. We also have rising third graders, we are serving 30 students. And so the, the idea behind our camp is very similar to the district one, is creating that love for reading. It's not the sit and get, it's very hands-on, showing the kids that reading can be fun. All of the children will walk away with books to take home, at least 15 books they'll be taking home. So hoping to create that love of learning for the kids and prevent that summer slide as well.
Thank you, ladies. Any questions?
Carissa, where is your camp going to be?
We will be at John Pittard and Hobgood.
Okay, and Jenny, yours is at Bradley. Thank you.
Thank you. Two wonderful programs.
The theme of tonight is getting ready for summer, in case you haven't noticed. This will be our last chance. At this time, I'd like Sandy to come up, if she would please, and, and talk about the summer feeding program. And also, it's to inform the board, but it's also to let the public know what's going on too. So thank you.
All right. This year, the summer feeding program is gonna start next Tuesday, which is May 30th, and run through July 28th. We are servicing 27 locations this year. We have four for the Chauvis, five for the Chauvis XL, we've got five for Sprout, and four for our van. And then the other ones are our land-based locations that we'll be going to.
And again, this is for anyone who's 18 or younger?
18 and younger.
And I'm assuming?
Doesn't matter if they're a member of the city schools, if they're a county school, if they're visiting from out of town, it does not matter, as long as they're 18 and younger.
And I'm sure those will be posted or are posted on the website, right? For those who need information?
They're supposed to be posted on the website, yes, in Channel 3 and the newspaper, and we're getting all the information out.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you for taking that on. Your leadership has been phenomenal, and the more children that are fed, of course, the better. Thank you for taking that on.
And this year, we're going out to Woodbury. So we're expanding.
Wow.
Wow.
We are, and we're going to Woodbury. Great.
We're going to Woodbury, so, thank you.
That's great.
Greg had a meeting, and I wasn't sure he would get back. This summer, he will be having his Jims Camp and also his Boys to Men Camp, and so for parents, if they would look on the website about that. And then Ralph, I'm gonna let you or Candy talk about, please, the summer ESP programs that are going to be available.
Thought maybe Carissa would use this. Good evening. Candy, would you like to come up? Each year, ESP increases in enrollment, which allows us to expand our enrichment offerings. We're fortunate in ESP to have some very creative people working, and Candy Powers is one of those individuals, and I'm going to let her explain all of the new programs that we're gonna offer this summer.
Good evening. It's great to see you all again. Thank you so much for giving us a few minutes to talk about summer. Someone wouldn't let me make a PowerPoint, because we'd be here all night. So I'm doing this off the cuff. Yes, you can thank him. First, I want to talk about four aspects of the summer. Number one, camps that we're offering this summer. Number two, some of the programming, and especially new programming that we're introducing this summer, some of our partnerships, and a few of the field trips that will go on this summer as well. So first, some of the camps, and, and I'm talking about major camps that are occurring at more than one site. First, the Science, Art, Technology Camp, which is funded through 21st Century and Leap's Grant monies that we've received throughout the year. 10 of our schools, 10 of our 12 schools will hold those camps for the first week of summer, with the goal of enrolling those students, having them continue, because we, we lose a lot of students right at the beginning of summer, once school ends. A lot of those students that were attending ESP throughout the school year will stop attending through the summer. So we wanted to provide something that first week of summer that motivated students to want to enroll in summer ESP and continue that learning. So Science, Art, Technology Camp at all 10 grant sites, which is taught by three to four certified teachers at every school. Then, sometime a few months ago, we surveyed our fifth and sixth graders in ESP and asked them what they thought about ESP, what we could improve, and specifically for them, for our fifth and sixth graders. Their number one request was, please separate us from the fourth graders. They wanted to be treated a little more like middle schoolers than with the younger students. So we thought about that, and while we can't do that on an, you know, everyday basis all through the summer, we developed a two-week camp this summer that will happen from June 19th through June 30th, and it's called Camp Big Shots, for obvious reasons. They've got a lot of great things going on in this camp over two weeks, three major field trips. We will take, ESP will go for the first time to Nashville Shores with students. We would normally not take a field trip like that, but because these are just fifth and sixth graders, we're gonna give them a chance to show us how responsible they can be with our chaperones at Nashville Shores. And we will also take them to Huntsville Space Center.
Oh.
And our major, the one that we're all the most nervous about, but also the most excited about, is canoeing down the Kanee Fork River. So we're gonna do a four-mile canoe trip down the Kanee Fork River, and no worries, we're gonna have an adult in every canoe. A guide behind us and a guide ahead of us, so we should be very, very safe. Our students, they're looking so forward to this. Some of our fifth and sixth graders are fundraising on their own to try to make sure that they get to this camp. Aside from fifth and sixth grade camp, we also are looking at providing some kinder camps in July for incoming kindergarteners at multiple sites, maybe four or five sites. We will contact our, those parents of those incoming kindergarteners directly, either through email or by phone call, to enroll them in these week-long kinder camps that will be taught by kindergarten teachers. And just in effort to get them acclimated to the school and start learning school rules and procedures. Also, in partnership with Coordinated School Health and the Farm to School Initiative, we will have some Get Up and Grow camps at six of our 12 sites this summer. And the students that participate in those camps will also take a field trip to the farmer's market. So we thank Mary Lee for putting that together for us this summer. Chef Jack, out of the Nutrition Department, will facilitate junior chef camps at five of our sites in July. Additionally, all 12 of our sites, they're all unique and operate a little differently from each other and offer different classes for the children over the summer, different camps. So there are camps going on at all 12 sites that I did not mention tonight that are sports-related, art-related, design, literacy, math. So we've, we've got the gamut, we, if it could be offered, we are certainly offering it this summer. Some of the new programming that we have not taught before in ESP at all were the new drones that we just purchased. So our students will have the opportunity to build drones. They will not just fly them, they will build them. Then they will get to fly them, and then they will also learn how to repair them when they crash.
Good idea.
Drones.
And because of one of our technology gurus in the tech department, he introduced a, it's, it's a video game. He introduced it to me. It is called Kerbal Space. It's a video game, and we all know how kids love video games. This game is sort of a spaceflight program where they are humanoids in the game, and they're colonizing a new planet in space. And they will have to fly a spacecraft to colonize a new planet. So we have a couple of technology guys that are facilitating this new game at Discovery School with Discovery students and Black Fox students this summer. We hope to expand that to other schools after we see how it goes. Additionally, we just purchased digital art tablets. I don't know if you've ever seen the drawing tablets where you can draw on a, basically it's a black screen, you plug it into a computer, and you can create digital art. So a student draws on the drawing pad, and they see their art on a computer screen, which can be printed out. So this is particularly useful for kids that are interested in animation, anime art, really all different kinds of art, so they can draw, they can paint, they can use crayons, they can change their stylus to any kind of art tool that they need it to be for whatever they want to create. So we've purchased enough of those tablets to introduce that to two sites this summer, and we will rotate those around to the schools throughout next school year as well. Our libraries will be open at almost every single school with our media specialists running programs two or three days a week where our ESP students can go in and check out books throughout the summer. Where we don't have a library open, we will have Limeball Bookmobile coming, so those students will also have an opportunity to check out books. We'll also participate in the summer reading program with Limeball Library in terms of helping our students facilitate their reading logs and record what they've read this summer, and also give them that opportunity to read while they're with us during the school day. Some of the partnerships that we have this summer, MTSU is a wonderful partner, their math department is partnering with us this summer to do some math activities, particularly at Mitchell-Nelson. Their health, physical education, recreation department continues to partner with us to come into our schools to do health and physical fitness activities. The MTSU Rec Center is allowing Reeves-Rodger students to walk across the street every week this summer to go swimming for free. It's a wonderful partnership for them. The Girl Scouts of Middle Tennessee just trained our staff last Friday. The United Way provided all of the supplies for a nine-week STEM program for all of our students at all 12 of our schools. Also, Junior Achievement is a wonderful partner, trained our staff again last week. They will facilitate kindergarten and first grade junior achievement lessons. Believe they're doing our communities and our families are the curriculum that they will use this summer. The Nashville Predators will be coming in this summer and doing their Summer Hockey Rules Tour program, provided they ever lose and get time to set up those visits. Barney, the safety bus from the Transportation Department, will also come to all of our sites and do continuing safety lessons for students. The Confucius Institute is providing one of their Chinese teachers at Irma Segal this summer for a Chinese cultural camp for a week. And we have wonderful partners like Mid Cumberland Head Start, the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce, Kona Ice, Fresco Frozen Treats. And also wanted to mention that Kona Ice gave two of our ESP staff scholarships for next year. So we had quite a few of our ESP staff apply for the scholarship, and two of them will actually win a scholarship. And of course, no summer is complete in ESP without field trips. So the goal is at least one a week at every site. Sometimes that doesn't mean that we leave the site, it might, may mean that someone comes to us. But some of the places that they will go this summer include the Space Center in Huntsville, Chattanooga Aquarium, the Tennessee Hall of Fame, the Country Music Hall of Fame, Nashville Zoo, Patterson Park, the Discovery Center, and many, many, many others. So thank you so much for allowing us to give you an update.
Thank you, ma'am, very much.
She's been busy.
With a lot of activity going on this summer.
We by far have the best before and after-school care program in the state. And I think each time we're audited by the state auditors, they verify that with us. And so it's very something that we're proud of. Speaking of new items in ESP, we're going to expand the program. We're going to, in August of 2000, this August, in two months, cross our fingers, we're gonna offer early childcare, six weeks to school age. We're gonna have it, we're gonna have four groups. First group will be six weeks to one-year-old. The ratio is very, very low in these groups. In that group, it's one to four, so we're gonna have a maximum of eight children in that group. Then one-year to two-years-old, the maximum we can have is 10. Two-years to three-years, maximum 14. Three to five-years, maximum of 20. The hours will be 6:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We're gonna be on the school schedule, so we'll be at closed fall break, winter break, spring break. And right now, our employees who utilize other daycare facilities, they must pay for those weeks if they don't use them. Today, I received an email from a teacher who said, "Thank you, because I would have to pay $190 a week for the summer months, and I do not attend, just to keep my spot for next school year." So this is gonna be- So this is going to be very cost-effective for our parents. We're going to wait and do a parent survey for those parents who are going to take advantage of our program to see if we should be open in the summer, see if they want us to be, and if so, then we'll be open in the summer. The location is going to be Mitchell-Nelson, in the center of the town, in the center of the district. Ms. Robyn Newman will have to give her a shout-out, especially since she slipped out early on us. She is a huge supporter of ESP, huge supporter, and we connected, I don't know if she contacted us, or we contacted her, but she is ecstatic about this. We're going to use the adjacent building on the side of the elementary school. We're going to basically remodel it, a new flooring, fresh coat, paint, and some other woodwork, and cabinets, kitchen sinks, and things like that, and we hope it's done in two months. We're going to house-
It will, it will be done.
We're going to house the early ages in those two. There's two classrooms right there. Each group's going to get its own classroom. So the six weeks, one-year-olds will be on one side, and the one-year-olds, the two-year-olds on the other side of that adjacent building. And then those other two groups, the two- to three-year-olds and the three- to five-year-olds, will have classrooms, individual classrooms at the primary. So all of it will be at the Mitchell-Nelson. We, I sent out an email like at five o'clock yesterday afternoon, and we've already got eleven children committed to the program, and we can only keep fifty. So we're encouraged by that. We're going to hire a program director who's in charge of the whole thing, and then each group's going to have a lead teacher who will communicate to the parents. And also, there's going to be at least one other individual in each classroom. We'll probably hire some floaters for the adjacent building and the two classrooms. So there'll be at least two individuals with those children each class at all times. Let's see, the fees will be payroll-deducted, which is a huge benefit for the employees. And if, for some reason, we do not fill it up with our sixteen-hundred employees, we could open it up to the outside. Franklin Special School District has this exact plan, and they sometimes open it up to the outside with the contingency or the understanding that if an employee desires to be there, they will finish out the school year, and then that employee will, that child of the employee will take over.
But having said that, Franklin is quite a bit smaller than we are.
Exactly. Any questions regarding this program?
Ms. Renier?
I don't have a question. I just want to thank you, because this has been a long time coming. We, well, people have asked for this for years and years and years, and when you started, we started preschools with, you know, other children, teachers were not so happy because their children couldn't be a part of it. So I commend you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We've had a large number of positive emails because of this, so I appreciate it.
This is under the umbrella of ESP, but-
We're governed by the same rules of the daycare facilities.
Is that DCS? Is that the State Department of Education?
State Department of Education. We have the same guy, the state guy, who comes and tours our ESP sites during the year.
Okay.
He's helping us out.
That would be different than the Department of Children's Services.
Correct.
All right, okay.
Mr. Barry?
It's a great idea, another benefit for our teachers, and especially with the competition for teachers, it's always good to have, offer them something else. If it's successful, is there any plans to expand it at all, or you think this is it?
When we start getting on the waiting list, we're going to be looking at that, yes.
Okay.
I have a question. Do you take board members' children?
I knew that. I think that was his real question.
Let's see if we have spots for it.
Okay.
You know, he needs two.
Yeah.
Just, the program is self-sustaining, meaning it's a, okay for itself?
We've got a fund balance in ESP, and we're going to be under the same umbrella. I know the first year or two, especially startup cost, oh my gosh, it's going, we're going to lose money the first year or two, but I'm not wanting to make money, I just want to break even.
Good, okay. I like it as a benefit, I really do.
Yes, that's the main thing.
Do you have any idea what employees will cost?
Yes, the lead teacher, well, the program director will be on our site vector pay scale, and then our lead teacher will be on EA pay scale, and they'll work probably ten months out of the year. If they work more, then we'll pay them additional money, but they'll be on our EA pay scale. Then our, the other employees will be part-time, and I'm thinking eleven to twelve dollars an hour for them.
All right. Any other questions? Do you need approval for that, or have you already done, what, you've already done it? You've already gotten eleven and old. I think the cows got out yesterday. You don't need to close the gate, do you?
I don't know if we need approval, since it's just an expansion of the ESP program. What do you think, Kelly?
It's in the budget.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me. Mr. Anderson?
This is your revenue and expenditure report. We're through April thirtieth in this report document, at eighty-three percent of the year. Our net income is nine million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Last year at this time, we were at seven million, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, so we've improved about two and a half million dollars in our balance at this point. On the revenue side, our property tax collections are up three-hundred-and-two-thousand over last year at this time, and sales tax collections are up six-hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars over last year at this time. And of course, helps the fact that we have some cash in our accounts. Expenditure-wise, we're at seventy-five point two percent, which is really good, since we're at the eighty-three percent listing. Everything is falling within the budgeted numbers. The only thing that's over is your capital outlay, and that's because when we did the Bradley addition, there's monies that we've requested from the city on the computerization and stuff there, and we're waiting to hear back from the city on that. That's the only line item that's over, the eighty-three percent. Anyone has any questions on it?
I don't see anybody's hands up.
Thank you.
A good groundbreaking today for the Technology Center at Hobgood. Very good. Glad to see that rolling and getting started. It'll be a great thing for everybody involved. Anything to come up on the other business? Ms. Smith?
I actually was going to mention about that they were, what I was taking, he was talking about is that we had a groundbreaking at the Hobgood campus today, where we're going to have a bookless library through the Lineball Library, and in that neighborhood, forty-one percent of the people do not have access to the internet. So that really struck me, how important that that is. So there were two other things. One is, I was very pleased to see so many people that are so passionate about their children's educations come tonight, both teachers and parents, and I appreciate your all being here. So anyway, I just want to thank you. The other thing is, and I know that all of us, pretend that category, would be interested again, again about T and Ready. So where are we on T and Ready?
Uh, it's T and Ready. We have turned everything in, we're just waiting for to hear from the state. Of course, we made the decision, the board made the decision, and I appreciate that very much, that if we didn't get it back within five days, that we would not include it, and I'm grateful for that. I don't understand systems that are including it, but that's their opinion, they can do it. I did get an email today from a fellow superintendent who is concerned because they are having difficulty with the timing of the scanning of the tests, but I talked with Lori, and we are not having, I don't know if Lori's still here, but I think that, I think we'll be fine, we're just not sure when we're going to hear from them.
I noticed-
They were supposed to be back, they told us three months ago they were supposed to be back Monday. But Joe, have you, do you have any update at all from when?
No update. We're not expecting those back, just because of the time elapsed, and all they were going to send back were scale scores or quick scores. Quick scores, so it doesn't really relate to how well the student does, just the scores that we could use in case we wanted to include those. They won't be back in time. We know that, we weren't visiting that lot, they had to hand it back to us. Actually, we would need them this week.
Do you know, Joe, if we're going to, are we still projecting though that we, well, I guess we won't, to get them in the parents' hands, or we have no idea yet about that.
It does have, I mean, I would say that it does have some kind of result on how your child does.
He gets you.
I mean, it gives you a range.
That's right, that's right.
He doesn't tell us whether or not the children are proficient. He gives us a quick score.
Right, it gives you a percentile range.
No, it's, it's just a quick score, it's not a percentile, and they no longer tell you if that quick score is advanced, proficient, basic or below basic. It is just a number, it's called a quick score, and we have to be very careful with that quick score, because it doesn't come with a guide or a scale telling you a percentile.
I see.
That's all, and that's all calculated at the state level once everybody's scores are back, so just look at the data.
So as a system, help me understand, the T and Ready, is it designed to be back in your hands by the end of the year? I mean, is it on a timeline that it's introduced to, we receive it, and we have time to execute and turn in the results and get a reply back? Or is it just kind of like, here it is, and we may or may not get it back to you?
Joe, would you and Siobhan come up? Because I don't, what I would have to say about this probably wouldn't be good to put on television.
Because what I'm leaning to is, where is the breakdown? I mean, if the state is asking us to, or giving us information and giving us time to get it, to receive it, execute it, and then get it back to them in a timeline that allows us to get replies or get the information, where's the breakdown if that's not happening?
Well, I can't speak for the state. I can only say that our understanding is we'll get scores back, scores that we can use in October. That's about the time we get them. Now, by that time, we'll be back in school, August, September, and we'll get, and that's just the expectation. I think if I were trying to read the state's mind, eventually their plan is for us to go and use online tests, which will be scored much quicker, and they can return those scores to us in a timely manner, but at this point, I think they're cobbled together the best thing that they can, or, you know, I can't, like, once again, I can't speak for the state. But the expectation is, we've known this year that we won't get back usable scores that will tell us anything about how well we've done until October.
Got to change instruction. So you're already, we're starting in August, and we're already into October before we can really make any changes.
Really not, I mean, when we talk about using this at the end of the year to add, to execute something with the students' grading for final grades, we're not really talking about being able to do that. That's just kind of symbolic or a dream that we would like to have since we're, say, in October. So I guess I get confused in the idea that everybody's saying, yeah, we're going to get this back, and maybe some of the parents are anxious to get that back by that time, and then we really don't, in reality, we don't have any hope to get it back by that time.
Well, there's a chance that it could have gotten back. It's such a tight window, and the score that we'd have gotten back was that quick score that Siobhan mentioned. What we would have done with that, in order to execute that and put that in students' grade, would be, there's a formula we could put it into and convert it into a score that we could add to the students' grade. But that's a moot point, since we didn't get it back in time to do so. So, but we had the formula ready, so that had we gotten that, we would have been able to do it.
So what do we tell the parents when they will see it?
They'll see, we'll get those quick scores back. I don't know how we'll get, actually get them back to the parents. I guess we'll give them to them at the beginning of the school year for their students, and then we'll get their actual scores in October. And the parents always get the-
So in reality, then the program would be, students will take the test, and you'll find out, the results will be finalized for you to review in October.
I'm sorry, please sit.
Pretty close.
Yeah, so the results will be finalized for the parents to review in October.
That's correct.
Okay.
You would have some guideline about what we would get back in, hopefully in May, but as far as whether a school district is, what our accountability would be, what a school would be, it's not-
From the parent's standpoint, the parents will know in October whether or not their child was proficient or not proficient on the test. That's because that's where the state-
It's a big beating death, but then why do we even bother to try to foresee that we'll be able to put it into the grade, and have that as a false expectation?
Too much common sense.
Pardon me?
Too much common sense, Wes.
Wes, that, and part of the problem comes back when we don't get scores back until October, particularly schools or grade levels who may want to do some ability grouping in a classroom. You have to go on kind of, well, what does the teacher think? But as far as having those scores back, you don't have them. I have seen the times when parents got the scores in the first report card from last year. You know, this year, next year's report card gives this year's test, but this is not, well, I am going to say it too, this is not unusual.
Now, it sounds like kind of a-
As long as I've been involved, there've been a lot of times when scores didn't come back before the end of the school year.
But let me help, Mr. Ballard, I think with your question regarding the report cards that are going to be coming out here in the next few days. The state had hoped they would get those quick scores back to us in time to do that. So we're going to miss that window probably by, you know, ten days, five to ten days. And so, that was their hope, they weren't able to pull that off, but, so there's two separate scores, and that quick score would have been that score that we would have included in the report card. So you see the difference in the two scores. The other score that we'll get in October is how well the child did on the test, sort of on an item-by-item sort of basis, to say, in reading, they scored here, maybe above, you know, grade level or below grade level, and that sort of different scores.
Ms. Smith?
So is, do we have the capability, so if school ends and we don't have the quick scores, do we have the capability to put them on the site where I go and look at my child's grades?
Skyward.
Skyward, the information now, or, I mean, I look, that's where I check out my child's grades anyway, so I-
I'm thinking we don't have that capability to transfer those over, but that's something we can check.
There's a slot, it's just someone doing it.
It's, well, it's a matter, yes, it's a matter of a data transfer, because eighty-six-hundred students, it couldn't be a matter of somebody saying she got thirty-seven, he got forty-two, it would be a data transfer, and so that would, that would be an automated process. And so, I'm thinking that it's not, but that is something that we can check and make available.
Joe, would it be possible, and this is just off the cuff, and I hate to say things off the cuff, but if we did get the quick scores in, and principals were still in the building, or we had someone in the building, would it be possible to, I don't know, we'll look at that and see.
There is a slot on there for your child's scores.
Right, I understand.
I mean, I don't know.
And there has to be because of that state law, and it was state law, Mr. Ballard, that that has been made. Now, well, they just changed the percentage that's supposed to be part of the final grade, but it's a percentage of the second semester that's figured into the final grade.
May I say this to the board as a word of encouragement? One of the things that we're trying to do in our department is to make sure that that is not what we're hanging our hat on. It is a very important score, it makes a lot of difference, but it's not the only thing, so we need multiple points of data to be able to organize, because we can't wait until October to start teaching our children and knowing where they are. So that's why we're working. Now, it does mean, though, that sometimes we do other tests, and having one test at the end doesn't help you plan, so that's why we try to plan other additional tests throughout the year, so we can say, here's where we are, where did we hope we were going to be, and what do we need to do to adjust? If you don't look at the map until the end of the journey, it's too late to see how far you are from where you were hoping to go. So that's why we use multiple points of data.
Well, I will say, in form of Ms. Davis-Lewis, not having gone through all she did last year with the T and Ready, as a parent, it was hard to me to gauge where my child was academically, because we didn't have the results. So there is some value, I do think that we overtest, I mean, some, but we do need, we do need to have some assessment.
And teachers still use that data when it comes back, but it's not there for that starting point, and as you stated, as a district, we have other measures that we use to help us find that starting point, and once we get that data back, I often like to think about it as the autopsy, we still look at it to make teacher decisions, to see where are our students, where do we need to move them for the next year? And while that's the middle of the year, we have other measures to help us start that year, and those reports are important for the middle of the year to help us move forward. And we typically do give those out at that first parent-teacher conference when parents come to the- parents come to the building. That's when those, most parents are used to getting that true parent report at that time. And quick score data, we learned a few years ago, to be very careful with quick score because it's not a percentile or something that we can truly use such as a scale score or a nationally norm score. So we've just been, we've learned to be very mindful and to take the quick score as just that, a score, something quick that they send back to us, I think, to say, hey, we've given you the information before the beginning of the school year.
In another note, we'll be meeting with principals, the, the principals work two weeks beyond the end of school and we meet with them individually with the data that we have from other tests. So they do have data in their hands to start schools beginning of the school year.
I guess going forward, as we discussed, I'm going to ask more questions, not tonight, but go, going forward and maybe we can think about, what is the perfect situ, what, what is it we would like to happen? I mean, and you obviously know what you'd like to have happen, then let's go after that, you know? Let's decide what it is that's going to help our, our students and our teachers and our parents and say, okay, state, if you're in our way, let's somehow get on board and get them out of the way. I know I was dreaming.
We tried that last year and they told us, we tried that last year and they said they were going to hold our funding back.
I mean, the whole state.
Listen to me, this is one thing that I really don't want to hear a whole lot of is this is the way it's always been because going forward, we don't want to depend on what it's always been.
You need to talk to your legislator.
But this is a new thing.
Get them to change it.
It'll be different, it will be different next year, will it not? It'll be, because there's going to be, it will be on the computer.
Supposedly.
Maybe.
Fifth and sixth grade, there's an option for a computer this next year, the next year it will be required. One, one thing that, Mr. Ballard, I think it is really important and I, and I can't express to you how much I appreciate this board getting involved with the state legislature because that's where the change is going to have to be. And there are many of us that would love to see a test at the beginning of the year and a test at the end of the year because it, by measuring, having a test now and then having a test and waiting another year, really a true pre-post doesn't happen when you're, when you're looking at that. You don't have a true pre-test and post-test. So that's one of the changes that some of us would like to see. I think there's no question getting the scores back and I think the fact that while we say that school districts are measured on many different things, I think that has become, that the test has become so much the defining element in people's perception of whether it's a school system, good school system or not. And I would argue that we certainly need to be looking at something besides just that test to determine that because we're interested in, in people and not products. And I think that the, the test, if we're not careful, can produce a product. So I, I am grateful that when we talk about this school district, we don't ask first, how did you do on the test?
And, and may I add, Dr. Gilbert, I think it's really critical for us to, to realize there are other measures other than that test. And I think one of the things that Ms. Frank was talking about is a critical measure. And we as a district can be proud that we're providing services that lots of other districts haven't even begun to approach. So the test is a critical item, but those things, those other things that we do for children and looking at the long-term effect that those have on children. Because while those test scores will go away, if we can help a child with adverse childhood experiences, will make a better adult. And so I think that's critical for us to remember.
Thank you, sir, both of you. All right, anything else come before the board tonight? Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Good night.